Good evening. I would like to call the Eastline Board of Finance Special Meeting to order. Today is Monday, March 21st, time 7:00 P. M. I'd like to begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Next on the agenda is delegations. This is the part of the meeting where anyone in the public can speak to any item that is on our agenda this evening. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to an item on the agenda tonight, which is basically the Board of Ed budget? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. As you know, we are in the process of going through all departmental budgets prior to the adoption, and tonight we have the Board of Education and Superintendent Jeff Newton. Would you like to do the presenting?
I'm going to have our chairman, Eric Baumann, start us off.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Hi, thanks. I'm Eric Baumann, for those who I haven't met, had a chance to meet yet, and appreciate the time to just give a few comments before turning over to Jeff and the team to present. Also want to thank, I know a number of you have had some time to attend our workshops, and really do appreciate that you took some time to hear how we got to the point that we got to in the presentation they're going to hear. Kind of as I look through the budget in this year, there's kind of a few key points that I see. One is that the COVID recovery is still continuing, that we're not through the recovery. We've hopefully are through the worst of it, but we still are, it's still at the forefront of the Board of Ed and our goals. There are some good things that came from COVID. If you can say some good things, which is the Board of Finance of town, you know, allowed us to go to one-to-one computing, so each student has a laptop, or younger students have iPad. That's really helped our district, it helps each of our students, and we continue to look on how we can leverage those even more, so we really do appreciate that. And so then some of the tougher things that we've had to go through. So, we had to make some tough decisions in the budget, and what we're, what we've done, and what we've done to put together is, we've had to go through, you know, making some tough, you know, balancing fiscal decisions to keep a low budget, at the same time do what we can to progress the budget, and I think, progress the district, and I think we've done that. Some of the challenges we've had, so inflation, we're definitely seeing rising costs from inflation, definitely higher energy costs, higher minimum wage is impacting us, and then we also seeing an increased prevalence in special ed. So that is, all those are drivers that are kind of hitting us and increasing our costs. We've also had two new three-year agreements with our teachers in paras, and you've seen two and a half percent increase for those, so those will kick in, in the next school year, for this budget year. And overall, you know, I'll turn it over to Jeff, but I think the Board of Ed, you know, really supports this budget. It was, it was tough making some of the decisions that we had, but I think it does balance us being fiscally responsible with also making sure that we're progressing the district. So appreciate it, and turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Baumann. Let me sign back in here quick. There you go. That was me, Paul, sorry, my computer. All right, yeah, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you. Thank you for the opportunity to come down and share some information. We have a handful of slides that we want to share, as the budget process has evolved, so has our slide deck. Some of the slides you see, you've seen in the past, and others have been tweaked, and added to, or modified, or adjusted some. You know, this process is a lengthy one, as we start back in September, October, and it runs us, you know, right into the beginning of the summer. So with that being said, we'll go through the slides, and then if it's okay with all of you, we'll open up and have some open dialogue and questions at that time, and answers. Is that okay? All right, super, thank you. So let me just start off by referencing, again, you know, for the public and our process, we really hone in on trying to engage in, you know, workshop process to start off our budget at the school district, and that includes the Board of Finance, and having you part of that process. Two workshops took place, one in November and one in December, and that really kicks us off. It opens up dialogue, it opens up discussion on, you know, what are the important points that we need to focus on as a district, and then we start to get into the fiscal components of that, and, you know, what's going to work for us, and what might not, and what we need to do with repurposing, or the dollars that were allocated for our budget. Goals, the Board of Education has a few of them. I just wanted to highlight two specific ones, because these are the two of the most important. One being recovery, as Mr. Baumann just mentioned, recovery efforts, you know, from the pandemic have been much more significant this year than I think we anticipated, and I think that's going to carry over into next year as well. So making sure, and the Board is focused on making sure, that we're monitoring and supporting those recovery efforts, which are going to, you know, carry through with the, the next budget in the next fiscal year. And opportunities too. In any crisis comes opportunity, and there's opportunities for us as a district, and areas that we are capitalizing and focusing on. That's the integration of technology into all of our work, focused on the social and emotional learning components, that we're engaged in supporting students and staff that have really struggled this year and last year, the last two years, and will continue to struggle as we move into next year. Our diversity, equity, inclusion efforts, communication and engagement, and a few other items that we're going to talk about in just a few minutes. When we think about a need statement, when we're looking ahead to the 22, 23 school year, we thought long and hard, as an administrative team, working with our board, working through the workshops on, you know, what are those specific core needs, and these four areas are really ones that kind of came, came to light, or rose to the top, I guess I should say. You know, student behavioral and emotional issues, we have seen plenty of them this year, more so than we have in past years, that's for sure, and that's occurrence of the pandemic. Ongoing achievement gaps, we have found achievement gaps, and we're working through those for students because of the disruption in learning that happened last year. Needed support services, Mrs. Davis is here, and she's going to talk a little bit later about some of our student support services and the needs. Mr. Baumann mentioned the prevalence rate in special education, it's up significantly at the state level, and up in our district, and every district as well. We're going to talk a little bit about that. And then lastly, ensuring, you know, adult-to-student ratios remain where they need to be to ensure that we're supporting, you know, the students. We heard loud and clear from parents through the Board of Ed process before they adopted the budget on February 28th, making sure that, you know, we're keeping appropriate class sizes, you know, for our children. And with that, just that last sentence, you know, it's a collaborative effort again. I think over the years, we've really built a solid collaborative format between the Board of Ed Administration, Board of Finance, Board of Selectment as well, and we look forward to continuing that as we march forward. So five additional core areas, and these are a couple of the areas we're going to just briefly talk about this evening. Many of you have seen, have seen this slide. This one didn't change, but these are really our core areas. The student-centered coaching, big focus on that this year, to support intervention work with students, as well as supporting staff in the classroom. Mrs. Spaziano, our Assistant Superintendent, is going to talk about that in just a few minutes. As well as the MTSS at the high school level, the multi-tiered systems of support, that's intervention at the high school level. You know, this year we've engaged over 80 high school students in intervention that they previously did not have. So we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that as well. Pathways and career exploration, the Board of Ed Administration has been highly focused on bringing forth opportunities for students that aren't going to go to college, whether it be working at EB, electrician, whatever, outside the college realm professions, you know, might, might be. So developing pathways to those careers is something we focused on this, this current school year, and having a pathways coordinator to help us with that. Additionally, we needed to bring back all of the internships that we lost for our Coastal Connection Program at the high school level. Students were engaging those prior to the pandemic, we lost, those all fell apart and disappeared with, with the onset of the pandemic. We have rebuilt and reestablished all those connections this year. So that's been an extremely important aspect of the work of the pathways coordinator, and encouraging, and engaging in further development of career exploration. Technology advancements, software on the rise, the use of software, devices are continuing to be used in exponential manner, students, you know, have them in front of them in the classroom. That was such a win-win by bringing in those one-to-one devices, and again, we'll say, we've, I've said it many times, we appreciate the support of the Board of Finance in helping us to, to fund that back two years ago. And then also, lastly, Mrs. Davis, again, will talk about the SEL, Social and Emotional Learning and Supports, which are, together, another vast area of, of need across the district. Grand-funded positions, you're aware, we had around $1.7 million in ARP-ESR funding. We have used, actually a little bit more than that, and over the two years, we have used 1.3 roughly million of that to fill positions that have occurred, you know, this year. And we've been working to embed some of these positions into the operating budget, some of them are going to disappear, and some of them, in time, will look to maybe be repurposed, brought into the operating budget to be, you know, through repurposing. Some of these are going to carry over into next year using remaining ARP-ESR funding, and that's the next slide, Slide 7. You can see we have $840,000 left, 840,495, that's remaining. That's going to cover some additional elementary teachers this year, which we found ironically that if, you know, we put those in place using ARP-ESR funds, we would have been in trouble if we didn't have SRARP funds for this current year, because there was a spike. We, there was a great need for elementary teachers to make sure that our class sizes were where they needed to be. So we're planning on continuing with four teachers for next year there. The elementary technology teacher, we have one at each elementary school, continuing to fund those three individuals through ARP-ESR dollars. There was a big gap, they were finding between fourth grade, when fourth grade students went on to fifth grade. Fifth grade technology teachers were ready to go implement technology and instruction with students that weren't ready, have not been ready, because they're not taught a lot of those skills down at the elementary level. The technology teachers at the elementary level now are engaging in that work, preparing students through the use of their devices, as they travel up now in a more of a K to 12 perspective. And then the elementary school psychologist, we were in need of, continuing to keep an additional school psychologist in one of our elementary schools going forward. So that total, as you can see, 840,495 for remaining ARP-ESR dollars for next year. If we look at major budget drivers on Slide 8, 48 and a half, or 49% roughly, or, you know, 1,163,769 of the budget increase is, is around salaries. That's a large component. Contractual obligations, Mr. Baumann mentioned just a few minutes ago, we have para and teacher contracts that are coming into play for next year, new contracts, three-year agreements, all sitting approximately around 2.5% for an increase. You know, we have over 600 employees, you know, in the Eastline Public Schools. That's a lot of staff who are requiring increases in, in their, their wages. Makes up, you know, 50% of our overall increase going into, adopted, increase going into next year that the Board of Ed adopted. So salaries are a big component, and again, I mentioned we're using some remaining ARP funds for some coverage of staff, you know, for next year. Benefits is another large area, as we know, 4.19,000, almost 18% of the overall increase. We put in a 5% increase in the budget for health insurance for next year. We're hoping that through the state plan, that it comes in lower. This current year, it was lower than that. We haven't heard any new data, I don't think, on, on that with the state partnership plan to date.
No, nothing filed.
Nothing filed yet. Yeah, so that's our, that's our range, so we're at 5% there. But again, 5% for the number of employees that we have computes out to 419,000. Contractual, or contracted, contracted services, I should say, 15.31%, or 367,000 of the, the budget increase. And that increase in contracted services is mainly due to technology contract, as well as nursing services that have been needed. You've heard me probably say before, or heard the Board of Ed talk about the fact that we used ARP-ESR funds. Rather than coming to the town to request money in, either through appropriation, or to go through the Board of Select and Board of Finance, we used some of the ARP-ESR funds to cover the cost, around $200,000 of our technology budget, which freed up operating dollars to fix our baseball field, because it was in dire need. I'm sure you've driven by, it's still in process. So that was a definite need that the Board of Ed approved, and we moved forward with. The other aspect, I mentioned the, the nurses, there's a need through our student service departments, and students that have a greater need to bring forth nursing and nursing support services for some children. And then the last, or the fourth column or fourth area, you know, utilities, we'll talk about inflation quickly in just a minute, but utilities are up. I think that's no surprise to anyone, electricity, gas, you name it, it's, it's up, and we're recognized as 278,000, $265 budget increase across our over 700,000 square feet of building Minimum wage, just a quick reference to minimum wage, it's on the rise as well. By June 1st, 2023, well, I should get a reference, you know, July 1st, this coming July 1st, it's $14, and then the year after it goes to $15. But we have to be cognizant of that as our staff, and the salaries and wages that we're paying our staff. So minimum wage across the state of Connecticut is up, and will be up 48 and a half percent if you look at this window from 2017 through June 2023. Inflation, just a quick statistic on inflation, again, no surprise to anybody, this is, you know, from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, CPI, you know, we have all items, and all items less food and energy, and you can see food and energy is really, you know, a big driver. Inflation is on the rise, just in one year's time, and that's been extremely impactful as we are working through our budget and, you know, our pocketbooks for all of us. And then fixed costs, salaries and benefits really make up, you know, 80% of this 96% or 97% of, of fixed costs across our $54 million budget. There's not a lot we can do. We can't go back and change contracts and lessen, you know, percentage of an increase that, you know, teachers or administrators or, you know, paras, whoever it might be, you know, are getting. The contracts are the contracts, and have been negotiated and agreed upon. So salaries and benefits make up a large chunk of those fixed expenses. We have tuition, we have transportation expenses that make up 6.12% of that. And then all those other operating expenses, utilities I just, you know, talked about, and contracted services for the maintenance of over 700,000 square feet of building space. That small sliver is what we have to work with, where we continue each year to kind of narrow down the supplies, textbooks, software, and equipment, to help us bring our budget into a fiscally responsible budget we can bring forward to the town. So there's the areas that we have to work with right there. So there's our fixed expenses, which brought us to that 4.59%. Yeah, I know most of you have seen this slide, and you were part of those initial preliminary discussions on the budget. We came in, out of the gate, around 6.95, added in the positions that were funded, being funded through ARP and ESR, which rose the overall budget increase up to, you know, almost 10%, 9.53. And then we really started doing our due diligence and homework, and knocking this down to 5.91, and then ultimately 4.59% of an increase, which is what my proposal was to the Board of Ed, and on February 28th, we presented, and the Board of Ed, we, the Board of Ed adopted the, the 4.59. So that's, that's where we're at with, you know, how we got to our, our number. Couple other good useful pieces of information, the per pupil expenditures, you know, as a town, we do very well in spending $19,761 per pupil for an expenditure cost. Now, if you look at the towns that spend more money, and the towns that spend less money, if you redid this scale, and you just said, okay, let's match this entire group with how students perform and data, you'd find us at the top of the, the top of this, this chart, with our scores, we do very well, our students do very well, and have exceeded. So what I'm trying to say is, you know, for the amount of money we're spending, we're getting a good bang for our buck in producing some, some quality students. So wanted to make sure we were able to share that, that out. And again, we just took the, the regional, you know, groupings of towns around us. I'm going to, at this point, turn it over to Mrs. Spaziano, who's going to talk about some of the impacts, outcomes, you know, and benefits of some of the components that we put in place, such as our coaching and intervention models. Annalise?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm going to just briefly overview two shifts in our staffing model that we made as a result of some of the priorities we've identified from some of the achievement gaps that Mr. Newton had been referring to before. And I'm going to focus specifically around math. So first staffing model was that we really shift, we shifted to a student-centered coaching model. So at this moment in time, we have math and literacy coaches at each of our elementary buildings. We also have a math and literacy coach at our middle school, and we have a literacy coach at the high school. So what the student-centered coaching model is all about really is that we, they start at, they start that partnership by looking at student assessment data. So they'll look at, how are the students doing right now? So this is the coach and the teacher, sort of looking at that information together. They identify areas of priority of the students that the teacher has in front of them at that moment in time, and then they enter into a six-week, week coaching cycle, and they set sort of intended outcomes at the end of those six weeks affiliated with the skillsets that students need in order to be successful, associated with the data that they're looking at. And what I can tell you initially, off the bat, is that we're finding a huge amount of success with regards to this model on a variety of different levels. So we are seeing an increase in student achievement, and I'll show you just a snapshot of that at the middle school level in just a second. But we're also seeing increased collegial relationships between teachers and coaches centered around what's in the best interest for kids, and we're really, and it's really helped to increase our capacity around high-quality instructional strategies that really helped to move forward students in a way that's efficient and effective. So with that being said, the next slide indicates some of the mid-year data growth that we are seeing at the middle school level. So I'll take just a second to explain it to you. This is our eye-ready assessment, which is our math screener at the middle school level. So you can see that all students, that cohort grades five to eight, this is the percentage of students who demonstrated growth from the fall to the winter assessment. So back in 2021, we saw that 55% of students in grades five through eight demonstrated growth on the assessment. This year, we've seen 71%, which we're really pleased about. If we think about students who are receiving additional support, we refer to those students in different tiers. So Tier 2 students are students who are identified, who need just a little bit of additional help as it relates, as it relates to some deficits that they're demonstrating in areas. And this Tier 2 cohort that's represented on this graph is 20, excuse me, 32 students. So you can see, we saw a small, a small amount of growth from last year to this year with our Tier 2 students. But what's most powerful on this graph, graph is the last column there. So for the first time ever in Eastline, we've been able to actually separate a third tier of students who have not demonstrated a lot of success in Tier 2, and so we sort of up the ante in terms of the supports and resources that we provide for them through Tier 3 instruction, so additional, you know, tutoring and work individual with students who need it. And of that cohort of 29 students, we saw 100% of those students demonstrate growth from beginning of the year and the mid, middle of the year. So I, what's important to also point out in looking at this data is that these are students that, if they're not successful in these tiers, eventually they get referred to special education. And so through the implementation of coaches and providing these tiered services, essentially what we're trying to do is keep students from being referred into that educational pipeline. Doesn't happen all of the time, but you can see here that we're really, we're really having some true success at the middle school in supporting students in their math achievement. The other staffing model I wanted to highlight this evening is the multi-tiered system of support model at the high school. So we, we call this model MTSS. We also follow a very similar tiered structure in terms of intervention. And one of the differences that we've made in this model is that through the academic resource at the high school, we used to staff this program with paraprofessionals. And we've shifted the, the staffing model from paraprofessionals to actually certified teachers in content areas to support the growth of our students who are in need of additional support. So let me just demonstrate to you what we've seen as an initial impact of this. Now, this is a smaller cohort of students, and this is representative of some of the work that the MTSS math teacher did in her initial transition into the high school. So we had administered the STAR, which is our screener for, at a high school level for math, math assessment to, to students. Off the bat, we identified 16 students who were identified as urgent intervention. And so we took the opportunity to cohort those students and really focus on identifying what were their deficit areas, and in what ways did they need support. So they entered into a program with this certified MTSS math person at the high school in the ARC program. And mid-year data, just taking a look, through this STAR math assessment, it's a nationally normed assessment, so what you would see nationally as a trend in any cohort of students who are taking the assessment, that you'd see 33% of students below, below typical growth, you'd see 33% of students at typical growth, and you'd see 33% of students above typical growth. Well, the students in this cohort sort of blew those numbers out of the water. So all of our 16 students have at least met their growth targets, and more than half of them exceeded those. Again, this is a cohort of students who, had they not been successful in the tiered intervention cycle, may have been referred to special education services, but we are, through this intervention, we've been able to keep them out of that pipeline, and close some achievement gaps, and, you know, academic deficits in the math area to support their success in their classrooms. I think that's it for me. I'm going to pass it over to my colleague, Kim Davis, to talk about student support services. Thank you.
All right, good evening. It's nice to see you all tonight. So I'm here to not only talk about special education, but to talk about student services as a broader umbrella. So what we've, on this slide, is put together some data and information, as well as some proposed support solutions to address these needs. So one of the main themes that we've sort of assessed over the course of this school year is a bit of a changing demographic to the students who are entering Eastline Public Schools. So for example, from the first day of school until mid-January, this number is from, there were, there were 23 new students with disabilities who moved into our district, and of those, six of them came with a one-to-one paraprofessional already listed on their IEP. That means that the student has multiple needs, whether they're around health and safety, or behavior, or communication, as well as academics. So that's a higher level of intensity, if you will, as a way to understand what that means. And so, you know, that necessitates, you know, the staffing, we have to provide that staffing when students come to us with that on their IEP, and it's just a different style of student. We also had IEP students move out of our district between, you know, the first day of school and now, and those were 14 students without paraprofessionals. So, you know, it's hard to say, you know, why one is happening, but it's just a trend we're noticing. So in order to address that, we're hoping to add an additional full-time special education teacher who would be shared between Flanders, I'm sorry, Lily B. Haynes and Nyonic Center School, because those elementary numbers of students are high. We do think that there is some correlation around that with the pandemic in terms of, you know, academic gaps in learning. For instance, our current second graders have, this is their first full year of school. They were kindergartners when the pandemic shut schools down, they had a hybrid year mainly as first graders, and so this second grade year has been their first full uninterrupted experience, and we are seeing significant challenges with that cohort of students. So then, another demographic that has changed for us as a district is our multi-language learners, in the past called ELL students. We have had 56 in the school year of 2021, and this year, right now, we have 82. So I reached out to the state for some guidance around ratios and teaching for this population of students, and they recommend a certified EL teacher at the ratio of 1 to 40. So we do have one certified teacher for this group right now, and now, and a paraprofessional who supports her. And those two adults cover our whole district. So what we're proposing in this budget is to add an additional certified teacher so that we would have a cohort of three team working to support the 82 students that are now in district with multi-language needs. You heard Mr. Newton allude to healthcare needs at the middle school. This is not specific to special education. There are students in our buildings who are, you know, perfectly, you know, participating in all of our general education classes, but have health concerns that require additional time in the health office. And so at the middle school, there is a little bubble right now, which necessitated the addition of five hours of nursing, registered nursing care. As well as at Lily B. Haynes, as you know, well, hopefully, you know, but I'm happy to share with you that we have an integrated preschool program, which serves students with special needs and their typical peers, as well as creative play school and the Lily B. Haynes elementary population. So a lot more kids on that campus, approximately 449, as I looked up the count today. And so in addition to their school nurse, we added a health aide, because, you know, certainly this school year, there have been more things funneling through the nurse's office related to COVID and contact tracing. But in addition to that, there's a lot of traffic just in the nurse's office, reviewing health assessment forms and, you know, keeping up with everyone and making sure that they're getting the attention they need. And so for that reason, we've added a health aide to further staff the Lily B. Haynes health room. So you've also heard us mentioning social and emotional learning. Those are really some of the building blocks that help kids be successful in the long run with both academics and mental health. They're the kind of skills that you learn about perseverance as a, in the example of a social-emotional skill, problem-solving, goal-directed behavior, being aware of yourself and how your interactions affect someone else, your tone of voice, your cultural awareness, your ability to problem-solve and seek help if you're not solving your problem. Those are all part of the social-emotional landscape of learning, and kids are struggling with those right now. They spent a lot of time isolated from their peers, a lot of time, we think, on screens, and they're struggling in class to negotiate those things and problem-solve and be good community members of their classrooms. So in order to, you know, continue to support social-emotional learning and mental health in our district, we'd like to maintain the social worker at the elementary. We have one social worker at the elementary, which was already in our budget, and we, of course, would like to support keeping that. We have two social workers at the middle school. One was funded with the ARP monies, and we'd like to maintain that. The middle school, as you can see by the crisis data, has had approximately 85 incidents to date, which could be anything from calling 211 for a suicide risk assessment, to a DCF call, to, you know, a, any other kind of mental health incident. And then we have two social workers now at the high school as well, which we had accomplished with our 2021 budget, and we're looking to maintain that as well. They are working all the time. We are building relationships with kids, and we're glad to see that kids are sharing their needs with us. So these numbers could be a little higher because we have people for kids to report to. But we also know, just as a cultural landscape right now, that kids are struggling with lots of social-emotional and mental health issues. It also, as a, as a way to support SEL and mental health at the elementary level, we are using school psychologists. And so we have, we had in the past had partial school psychologists at each building, and they were shared between the three and preschool. So what we did to respond to COVID and support kids is have one full-time school psychologist at every elementary school, and a fourth one who was focused on our specialty, special education programs and preschool. And we'd like to maintain that, because what they're doing at the elementary level is getting into classes and facilitating small group social skills instruction. They're there for crisis intervention. They are also the folks who test kids to see if they have been referred to special education, that's part of the puzzle, to see if they qualify for those services. So they are multifaceted individuals. And as you can see at the bottom of this slide, and hopefully, as my words convey, social-emotional learning continues to be an important priority so that we can try to get kids back on track and see some of these things be minimized for them and get back to, you know, healthy lifestyles where, you know, everyone is getting along, we're having less social media, you know, crises and influences, and really building strong relationships with one another as a school community. All right. You also heard Mr. Newton mention the special education prevalence rates. This information was just shared with directors recently via email from the state. So statewide, the prevalence of special education is up to, you can see, an all-time high of 16.3% of the total pre-K through 12 population of Connecticut. As a district, we are right at 17%. So we're just a little bit above that state prevalence rate. They also shared this, which I thought was a powerful graph and wanted to share with all of you as well, is that as enrollment is on a slight decline statewide, special education numbers are increasing. So it's not just here, in Eastline, that we're seeing the, the need for students change. It's a statewide trend, if you will. And I think that, I have one more slide here for you. Sometimes, there's a question about our out-of-district costs in the form of tuition to private special education placements. We do work very hard to keep all of our students with disabilities in our district so that they are experiencing education with their typical peers, accessing their community, and providing a diversified student body for all of our students. So we currently have 11 districts, 11 students placed out of district, and you can see that the average tuition is about $90,000 for that, and the average transportation cost is about $25,000, and that's per student. So we're very proud of the programs we have in district that allow us to keep our kids with us, rather than send them somewhere and also incur a larger cost. So, and with that, I'll turn it back to Mr. Newton.
Thanks, Mrs. Davis. You know, just to echo that last slide, having, you know, 11 students placed out of district to receive their educational services is really a testament to the hard work that Mrs. Davis and all the special education staff members, you know, have done over the years. That number is extremely low compared to, you know, many other districts. We were kind of researching other districts earlier today, and, you know, I know it's much different apples and oranges, but Hartford had, was it 500? 558 students outplaced, spending that kind of money, $35 million, I think it was. So it's our job to work as hard as we can to keep students in district. It's a much lower cost, but with that comes the need for staffing to support those students. And again, to have only 11 students, you know, outplaced for a district of, you know, over 2,600 students, if you compare that to other districts, we're doing very well in, in providing those services. So I just wanted to emphasize that and the hard work that Mrs. Davis has, has done with her team members. Enrollment. So wanted to give you a quick snapshot of what our enrollment looks like. We looked back a couple of years and went ahead as well. We've received some data on, you know, future predictions on enrollment. So looking back to, you know, 17, 18, we were sitting, you know, around 2,700 students, 2,761 to be exact. We have declined some, 21, 22, you know, 2,636, difference of, I think that's approximately 120 or 125 roughly, students. Not a huge number. You spread that out over, you know, pre-K to 12 environment, you can't just simply, you know, snap your fingers and remove staff because of that number. I mean, it's spread out over all of the buildings. You can see it kind of drops a little bit more, but then it levels and projects, starts to project back up a little bit, whereby 2030, 31, we're supposed to be back up, you know, around 2,607 students. So not a lot of fluctuation when it comes to, you know, our projected enrollment and, you know, where we've, where we've been. But with the enrollment steady, remember, as Mrs. Davis just said, the special education prevalence rate continues to climb, where we're seeing more of this population of students requiring, you know, additional educational services. And I just want to emphasize, too, that we are monitoring that enrollment closely, you know, across all the buildings. And we have pockets at the high school and the middle school of a decline, and we've been responsive to that. We reduced an entire KIV at the middle school for next year, which had an FTE reduction. And we've got three less FTEs, positions, teaching positions at the middle school for next year. At the high school, 1.4 FTE high school reductions as well. So we're being responsive to the pockets of areas where we know that we can reduce, and not just turning a blind eye to those things because we want to keep, you know, those in place. It's not fiscally responsible. So we're doing everything we can to make sure that what we ask for, we need, and what we don't need, we don't ask for, and we have reductions as necessary. With that, I want to turn it over just quickly to Mr. Lund. Dr. Lund is here, and he's going to just talk about capital improvement plan items. I want to make sure that we have just an opportunity to share out some of the important components of our CIP plan, which you have in your budget package. So, Mr. Lund, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Hello, everyone. As you see before you is a modest CIP plan for the coming year. It's been quite an interesting year, this past year, with the way of inflation and costs for construction and whatnot. I've been focusing on air handling equipment, HVAC and whatnot at the middle school and at the high school. We went through some evaluations of our process, or, excuse me, of our equipment, of our systems, started to look at the age of those systems. As I've been telling everyone, the middle school has reached that magic 20-year mark where things start to need to be replaced if they're made of moving parts, as has the B-wing on the high school. That's at its 20-year mark. The other parts of the high school have reached the 50-year mark, and like myself, the check engine light seems to have come on with that. So there's a lot of work that'll need to be done. And what I am trying to do is avoid getting in a situation where we wait and wait and wait, and then we have a $20 million project or a $15 million project. So over the next decade, I want to be in the position of changing out components, a certain number each year at the high school and middle school, so that we're never, never in that spot where everything in the future is going to be breaking down at the same time, trying to spread out that, that cost and that effort. So what you see predominantly are roofs, HVAC equipment, and then we start to look at parts of the high school that are at that 50-year mark, doors, for example. You know, they've been slammed 180, you know, 180 days by 50 years by however many times, and they just have reached the end of their life. They've, they've done what they're supposed to do and more. So we're starting to look at those types of issues, as well as, you know, asphalt. Lots of seniors have parked in that parking lot, and it's just reached the end of its life. So everything that you see before you on this list pretty much is just an acknowledgement of things reaching that time in their life when they need to be recapitalized, replaced, or otherwise repaired.
Thank you, Dr. Lund. Appreciate it. And with that being said, that ends our presentation. So we appreciate you enduring a little more time, maybe the last time for all of our slides. So with that, we'll turn it over to some open dialogue and questions. And just quickly, too, let me just thank the team, and all of our team is here, our administrative team, our central office team, our Board of Ed have all been a big part of this whole process. So thanks to them.
Great. Thank you very much for all the presentations. And, you know, as I emailed to you earlier today, we had received a list of questions from the Board of Selectmen just due to some of the timing. They, they weren't able to ask them. I know you got that list, and you were busy today with, with lots of meetings, it sounded like. So I want to be respectful of everybody's time, but also try to, you know, make use of everyone here in the room and be able to ask some of the questions that were brought to us by the Board of Selectmen, as well as from the folks here on the Board of Finance. So, you know, overall, I appreciate all the work that's, that's gone into this. I know it's a, it's a big task every year, and it's always a struggle because all of those fixed costs are the same things that we struggle with on the, on the town side. And of course, we also have to, you know, weigh what all of our residents are going through, too, in terms of inflation and, and all the struggles that they're dealing with. And at the same time, we had the head of our aging services tell us that, what was it, 39% of our residents are over the age of 55. So, so the, the school budget is, you know, the majority of the town's overall budget and what's affecting our taxpayers. So we need to be diligent about every number that we're looking at. And if there's any savings that we can find, then, then it's our responsibility to see if we can do it. So.
Yeah, with that, it'd be great, too, as we work through this process, too, to continue to hear, you know, about how, how our grant list is doing and the revenues that are, that are coming into town as well. And I just know, we just did a reevaluation, so hopefully all those components are helping out in this process as well.
Yeah, definitely, there has been an increase in the grant list. Some of the things that go into it, though, I believe the single-family homes went up approximately 24%, 23 or 24%. We didn't see the same amount of growth in commercial, industrial, or single, multifamily homes. So that can create a shift away from commercial and to residential, which is, again, another thing that
Definitely a factor.
That can affect people's, you know, and their final tax bill. So.
We, we made an attempt at some of those, those questions. Mariana's been feverishly kind of clicking away at the keys, trying to find some responses. So I don't know if you want to
It was a multiple number of
Yeah, there was a lot of questions we got this morning, and, you know, we, we can try and, you know, if you, if you want to start off with, you know, we can ask some of those or try and work through some of those, whatever is helpful. Whatever we don't have now, we can go back and collect and we can get to you.
That sounds like a great idea.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll start with the questions that were presented by Bill Weber earlier today. So he had a couple of general comments about the focus on things that don't necessarily touch the students, but were more inconsistencies between the schools. So I think part of your answer, or what we would look for more information, is on the student and staffing curves. How has the staffing changed along with the number of students, not only overall, but within the classroom? So that might be a, a bigger question that we might get back to. He was concerned with just paper copying, printing costs, you know, with so much going electronic, is the need for all of the paper, you know, shouldn't it be reduced at some point? And then there were, which has always been one of the things that I worry about is when we add a position, because we've got a grant, and then the grant goes away, but the position doesn't. So I, you know, I think we need to take a look and see whether or not, you know, those positions can either be eliminated, or are there grants that could, you know, help to, to overcome that increase?
Yeah, that's a big one, because, and we've talked a lot about that, because you're right, that, that money's going to run out, as we're projecting using 840,000 of the remaining dollars for next year and for, for staffing purposes. So, but to be very careful to try and either repurpose to be able to, or through attrition, you know, we don't fill other positions because we can do that, and we're able to potentially bring in, you know, a position that might have been funded, because that's the direction we, as a district, are going to, or need to support kids in a, in a greater manner. So absolutely, we've been following that and tracking that. But you're right. Now, it's a luxury and a nice thing to have the funding that we've had, but it's going to go away, and we need to be cognizant of that.
Just on item two, where he references
Want to come up here, Mariana?
Just on item two, where he references the paper copying and printing. So Ms. Davis can maybe expand a little bit on some of the items that have to get mailed. We can't for some of the special ed-related items. But to his point, we are, Anna and I are working on migrating to MUNIS. So on our end, that will eliminate quite a bit of paper for us, because right now, we have an older system, and we print requisitions, et cetera. So once we move to MUNIS, a lot of those, those, you know, we'll definitely reduce the paper use. But again, there are some things, like the, things that have to be mailed out. We can't email to parents because of laws regarding special education, IEPs, 504s, things like that.
And with the, the staffing inconsistencies, or variations or fluctuations And with the staffing inconsistencies, or variations or fluctuations that was brought up, you know, if you take the three elementary schools alone, and Mrs. Davis mentioned, you know, Lillie Haynes has 469 students. The other elementary schools are sitting just under that 300 mark, because all of those specialty programs are there. So you're going to obviously see a greater cost in that building versus the other ones. Additionally, you might have some staff at one of the elementary schools, again, I'll use it as an example, that have been in district more years than staff in another building. So they're higher on the wage scale, so they're getting paid more. So you're going to see fluctuations and variations there.
Right. And then there's also teachers that are at a lower step in some of the schools. So they will also get the general wage increases, as well as the step increase. So that would account for some of the fluctuations he refers to, as well as, you know, we have teachers' leave. So when we prepare the budget, we're preparing it now, we get it adopted, and during the summer, we might have teachers resign. When we hire them, we sometimes hire them maybe at a higher level, depending on their experience, or perhaps at a lower step. So that also accounts for the fluctuations. So, you know, if we had every single teacher at the same step, you wouldn't see, you know, those different percentages, but that doesn't happen. And we have teachers move from schools and from different schools. That, again, causes the changes in the percentages. And I think that kind of is one big section of some of one of his questions. So I don't know, more specific than that, you know, we'll have to get back to you on that.
I think in 101, the administration salary growth, you made a point that the overall Board of Ed budget and salary growth was outpaced in administration versus the certified teachers, whatever. So I think there is also some, a previously funded ARP grant for that administrative.
Yes, which, yeah, we've done a reduction going into next year.
Then there's the question on, you know, with the decrease in COVID impacts on the community, why are we continuing to see substitute, number of substitutes required going up?
Okay. So that line accounts for our long-term substitute, substitutes, and that's typically any substitute that's over 40 days. So basically, for our staff that is on FMLA typically. So based on what we have seen historically and some of the anticipated absences that we have, that's why you see the increase to 100,000. We are going to, I'm projecting this year spending a little over $100,000 just for long-term substitutes. It has nothing to do with COVID. It's just, you know, if someone is on a family medical leave, we have to obviously hire a long-term sub to fill the position. So that's what that is.
Okay.
And then his next one on 125, Object Code 125. So that was our, that's our supplemental stipend line. So those are coaches. We have stipends for some curriculum-based staff. So the increase, last year, we actually went down a little bit, not much, but for 21-22 this current year, because we were anticipating that perhaps we wouldn't have some clubs and sports running. We weren't sure. So we didn't want to just assume everything would run, so we kind of scaled back a little bit. That number that you see represents now all sports running. We did have a three-year phase-in for increases to those stipends. So 22-23 is the last year. So it's not that everyone got 11%. That's not the case. It's just, we kind of decreased for 21-22 because we weren't sure what would be happening with the pandemic. And now for 22-23, we're expecting that we'll be running everything.
So how then would that relate to the budget for 2020-21? Are you back to where it was?
I'm sorry.
Is it, is it, so does that mean that you're back to what was budgeted for pre-COVID?
No, it's higher because we were phasing it. We had a three-year phase-in increasing our sports stipends. I can
Per the contract. The contract allocated an increase, a percentage increase to
Right.
For each coach.
Okay.
And then Object Code 127, that accounts for lunch recess aids. So again, for 21-22, that regard, we were hoping that we wouldn't perhaps have to have as many and perhaps reduce hours. But unfortunately, with some staffing shortages, we really couldn't reduce the number of lunch recess aids, and we actually had to increase some hours. So we've kind of kept it the same for next year as well, because right now, again, with some staffing shortages and having trouble finding positions to, that would in the past typically help with the lunch recess, we needed to hire specific lunch recess aids.
So it wasn't that we were not compliant?
No, 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 no. We had other, you know, other people, staff would fill in, and we really thought, but you had this year, up until just recently, we had the mask mandate that was in place. So trying to make sure kids kept their masks in place and think, you know, there were quite a few things that, pre-pandemic, we didn't have, that we had to worry about.
Okay.
So number 10, there was an additional paraprofessional added, based on student need for the preschool.
And eight, nine, we do participate in the town
Oh, I missed that one, yes.
Yeah, the fuel
Yeah. Joe Burgon and I worked together on both the heating oil and the diesel and natural gas. Really, Joe does a great job with getting us pricing, so.
Okay. Yep. So.
And then number 11 is kind of what I was, like, 11A through, and I'll let Mr. Lund answer some of the maintenance questions, because that, he would have the information.
Oh, what?
So, some of those items, 11A, I mean, some of the
Sorry, just pointing out that we should probably repeat the question.
Oh, sure, sure, sure. Okay. So, yep, of course. Okay. So 11A, overall salaries grew 10.16% at Nyanic, while LBH grew at 5.84% and Flanders at 4.89. So that's what Jeff had mentioned before, and that I had mentioned. We have, we have positions that, you know, we budget a teacher at, say, a step 12, and they resign, they retire, well, retirements we usually know, but they resign, we bring someone else in, they could potentially come in at a step six, or a step four, or five, or vice versa. We could have a teacher resign that it's a step two or three, but we have a teacher come in, and they have quite a bit of teaching experience. So we certainly want to make sure we have the best teacher in place. So that, you know, we could be bringing someone in at a higher rate. So that, that's what accounts for those kind of different percentages. It's not that the teachers at one school are getting more of an increase than teachers at another school. It's just a matter of when I, when we prepare the budget to what actually happens after the budget's approved. So I don't know if that makes sense, everyone. Okay. Let's see. 11B, again, it's, I think, kind of the same thing. He says 111, oh, he's overall salaries, and then 111 certified salaries. So 11B is 111 certified salaries grew 10.25 at Nyanic Center, while Flanders grew 1.19. So I kind of answered 11A first. So I'll answer 11A, which is overall salaries. So again, that is the same thing. We have custodians retire. We have custodians resign. We have secretaries, you know, resign, retire. So we're bringing people in at different steps. So that accounts for, same thing with paraprofessionals. Paraprofessionals, you know, resign, they, you know, they retire, we bring them in at either a lower step, depending on their experience, a higher step. So again, that's what is accounting for the fluctuation in those increases. It's not that people are getting different increases. 11C, I will have to look at. That's our, like, OTPT. And if I had to guess, we are, yeah, well, it's, I think it's just a matter of, we're trying to align the FTEs to exactly where they're working. So there's just some changes in FTEs between the schools, but I will get you a definite answer.
Do you want us to go through, I mean, we could write probably responses to some of these, or is it easier to go through? I'm not sure. If, you want to continue with it, either way?
Because I've been writing.
I just want to make sure that you're comfortable with how you want to.
I think this is our opportunity to do it, but I
No problem. Whatever. Okay. All right. Just want to make sure that that's what you
And then this way too, it's on the video, and for any of our Board of Selectmen who couldn't be here can watch it.
You'd probably have less questions from us if
Yeah.
Okay. So then, so 11C, I will get back to you on. 11D, again, what is 125 supplemental? So again, the 125 supplemental are the stipends, and at the elementary level, it's typically curriculum-based stipends, or like the band instructor, music director, you know. So those, again, I, this year, am aligning, for the 22-23 budget, I'm aligning the stipends to more realistically match the school that they are in, whereas before, sometimes they were in district-wide. They were, so I will get you, show, in my response, I'll show you an analysis so that you can see what the differences are. But again, it's not that there is extra, it's just I've realigned them to match the location or the school that they're actually working in. 127 is not a large dollar amount, but why did this grow 27.2% at Nyanic, 96.21% at LBH, and 26.15 at Flanders? So that's the same kind of, 127 is our lunch recess aid, which I kind of answered at the top. Again, it was just, we had anticipated perhaps not needing as many, but we really did. So we, in 21-22, we had, we budgeted less, but then realized we needed them. And so we just continued the same hours and the same staffing level for 22-23. So, all right. 431, Mr. Lund is up.
Nyanic has a 46.62% growth in preventative maintenance, while Lillie Haynes has an 18.25% growth, and Flanders is 22. So I guess it's just a difference in preventative maintenance between the three schools here.
So there's a couple of questions, or at least one other question I saw regarding the increased costs in preventive maintenance, and particularly with the elementary schools. And what the driver is behind that is with the elementary renovations, we added significant mechanical systems to the buildings. We basically put central air and everything. So that's been, we did change orders to the existing contracts to cover the last two years, but that contract in itself, which is up for renewal this year, and based on discussions with the vendor that we do use, the price of HVAC equipment and whatnot, that's reflected in what we expect the preventive maintenance costs to be. And of course, that's whatever we get for a contract, but that's right now my expectation.
And just as a follow-up to that, I think Bill had also made the point that he thought some HVAC improvements might qualify for federal grant. So are we pursuing that?
Right. And I could have mentioned that during, when I went through the CIP slide, and there was a question in there as well. Anything in the CIP that is eligible for school, school grant reimbursement, we'll definitely pursue all those other sources of funding. For example, there's a bill before the connect legislation right now to add an additional $90 million to HVAC. Of course, in today's costs, that's not going to go very far, but at least it's additional funding. So anything that we can, we'll pursue, whether roofs typically qualify, the HVAC equipment, and certain other expenses. So we'll pursue all that. The problem, of course, with those school grants is we have to put the money out upfront, and then we get reimbursed. So we have to put out the full project cost within the CIPs. Was there anything else, Jeff?
No, I think that was it. Okay.
Look ahead a little bit, too.
So, and question, I think, 11G, 550 is another small dollar amount, but Flanders has no printing budget, while the other two schools have $500. So that's used for envelopes, envelopes, letterhead, things of that nature. So Lillie B. and Nyanic are in need, while Flanders probably doesn't need any this year. So they're, they just didn't budget for it. I think it's $500 in each line item. 580, Nyanic has, sorry, 11H, 580, Nyanic has twice the budget of Flanders for mileage. LBH has no mileage budget. So there are staff at Nyanic Center and at Flanders that are traveling to Lillie B. to provide some special classes. So that's why they have a mileage budget, and Lillie B. doesn't. I will have to look into why there's a difference in why one school has more than the other, but that's why there's nothing in Lillie B. 11I, 693 Auto Visual, I'll have to take a look at that. It's a very small amount, and I, you know, I think there's some maintenance for a few items that perhaps the other two schools have budgeted in 611, and maybe Lillie B. put it in 693. But I will take a look and get back to you on that one. The same thing with 11G, 641, 642, and 692, Nyanic textbooks grew 8.4%, while LBH decreased 16.21%. So I will take a look at that. I think I have an idea as to why Lillie B. decreased, but I want to make sure I give you the right answer. 11K, 410 electricity increases 33.91% at Lillie B., 27.76 at Flanders, but only 11.22 at Nyanic. What would, what would drive a 34% increase? Middle school is 13%. High school is 10.27%. So the electricity budget, what I did in, because this year, even though I'm locked in for the, I never get it, I always get it confused. I'm locked in with the generation, I think, and the supply is through Eversource. So that has gone up. So I took, I projected based on usage, what we would spend this year, and then I took this year's projected 21-22, applied an increase to that number, and that's how I budgeted for 22-23. When I take the increase over, what I budgeted over what I'm projecting for 21-22, they all average out to be about 10.4 to 10.3 of an increase. So basically, so in essence, you know, 21, this current year's budget for Lillie B. was probably too low, because I'm projecting them to spend over $100,000 this year. 11L, no.
Yep.
Yeah, L. 810 dues at Nyanic Center decrease 7.28%, while they increase 100% at Flanders. I'll take a look at that. It just means that some teachers probably requested, you know, to participate in organizations perhaps, and others didn't at other schools. 11M, overall, the above items contribute to Nyanic Center's budget increasing nearly 10%, while the other two grade schools, that's not really a question, it seems like a comment. Do you want me to just address the comment, the question, the questions? All right. So, now 12B, Chris, did you answer this one? 12B is 431 middle school preventive maintenance growth is 65.49%, which is well above all three grade schools, and the high school growth of 22.62%, but the total repairs and maintenance increase of 8.49% is in line with two of the three grade schools.
So the answer to this is the, we found recently with the HVAC equipment, particularly at the middle school, that it's operating under R224, I think is the right designation. that it's operating under R2, 24, I think is the right designation for the refrigerant, and unfortunately, that is no longer being manufactured. So as things break, we either have to buy from the limited stock, or we have to trans, or we have to convert, and a lot of that is done under preventive maintenance visits, so our preventive maintenance costs at the middle school in particular have been increasing significantly as that equipment gets old. The way our contract is structured for maintenance is minimal amounts of repairs get automatically taken care of, and they, they wind up reflected in preventive maintenance costs, whereas if something major breaks down, then we get a separate proposal. So I'm seeing just the overall increase at the middle schools going up significantly as the ages are getting to that point, and unlike the high school, the B-Wing is the only area at the high school that's at that magic 20-year mark, and we are starting to see something, but that's a limited number of units, whereas at the middle school, seen entire building, so that's why it's going up so quickly. So I hope that answers that part. Yeah, I think that answers that question.
I can answer C, 550, great to see printing is down 20%, middle school in 28, 29% roughly, high school, are there lessons learned that can be shared, you know, the grade schools? Well, you got apples and oranges, I mean, grade school kids are still, you know, five to eight-year-olds are learning how to write on paper pen, and there's a lot more paper that's used currently, but they all have devices too, so there is more technology usage as well. So I wouldn't say there's lessons that can be learned, but continuing to progress in that direction. 514 growth.
Yep, so, so 514, high school, 514 High School, 101,850, 7.17% growth for athletic transportation. Is this included in the bus contract? Are there opportunities? And that's, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what he means by that, but I can answer that, yes. Those are included in the bus contract. The bus contract increased 5% for 22-23, so that's part of the reason for the increase, and then the other part of the reason is in the past, we had, for some of our smaller sports teams, we would have coaches drive what we have to, very old-type mini buses. One of them is no longer in service, and then the other one is really not in great shape, so we use that very sparingly for kind of local trips, so we're using for student more, in more for our transportation.
You know, and just along that same, since we're talking about buses, I just had a question.
Sure.
I see in my neighborhood, there's kids that all get driven to school by their parents. They always do, they never take the bus, but the bus still comes to their house each day. Is that like state law?
Yes, passed through by law, yeah. We can ask a parent, you know, but a parent could turn around and say, you know, a month from now, I drive my kid every day, but a month from now, their car breaks down, they can't get it repaired, our bus has to be there to pick them up. If we don't keep the same route, it screws up, and we go and change it midstream, it screws up all the times, and all the families and kids, and it makes a complete mess. So, yeah, we have to provide transportation by law.
You know, it just seems like there ought to be something, especially given the cost of.
I know.
All right, so there's five or six kids in each bus. Do you see hope that they're increasing?
It has increased this year, it did go down, you know, what was it, three years ago? We tried to reduce two buses, and it was a complete nightmare, and took us until almost November to fix the issues and problems that took place. We were massacred. East Lime is, the way that we're, the town is set up, at the north end, way up by Salem and down here, and the way that the routes are designed, you think, oh, it's easy just to replace or take away two buses. It caused routes to be an hour long. It was a nightmare. But not to say, here are our thoughts too, you're starting, if we're just going to continue to see less students on buses, well, when we're thinking about what buses, what our fleet should look like, maybe we need to start getting smaller buses that are running the same routes, so it's a lesser cost. So that's something that we're, we're going to start to look at as well, but we just ran into an instrumental issue.
And it also depends on the school, like, middle school students ride the bus. Middle school students are our fullest buses, for example, you know, while high school students, as you can imagine, are less likely to be bus riders, but we still have to have those same numbers of buses in our fleet to manage the geographic area of the town, so. So sometimes you might see a high school bus, maybe you only see a few heads, but then when that bus, that same bus does the middle school route, it should be full, based on, you know, we do census inquiries with for student periodically, so we are looking at those trends as well, but.
Just one last bus question, does Salem send bus, do Salem kids do the high school?
Salem provides their own transportation.
They have their own four buses that they pay for, and they transport.
I'd have to look at 12B. Yep, 641 middle school textbooks decreased 23.91%, while high school textbooks increased 6.7%. I'll have to get back to you on that.
Just one point of reference on textbooks too, we've been asked in the past, well, how come we're not moving to online textbooks? Isn't it cheaper? No, it's not. It's basically the same, the same cost. They still get you one way or the other, sort of thing. So we still have, you know, textbooks that are needed and purchased, and need to be updated, you know, at the, at all of our levels.
So 12F, 410 electric increases 13.43 at middle school, and increased 10.27 at the high school, increases 33.91% at LBH, 27.76 at Flanders, and 11.22 at Nianic. Why do they not have similar growth? So that's the same answer I provided earlier. So I had, they all, based on what I'm projecting that we're going to spend this year for 21-22, then their increase is really averaging about 10.4 to 10.3% across all the schools. So it's not really that, it looks like it's a dramatic difference, because the 20, when we prepared the 21-22 budget, obviously, we did not anticipate energy costs to, you know, skyrocket as they have, so I just took it, I just took a look at all of our usage, our average usage by school, and then I projected what we would be spending based on the increased rates. I came up with the 21-22 projected expenditures, and then I added about 10% to that, you know, to come up with what we're spending now, what we're budget, what you see in the budgets. So the increase is really 10.4%, so it doesn't fluctuate as much if you're looking at what I'm projecting by school.
So 10.4 total, but.
Per school.
So I guess then why would you have a number of 33.91?
So we'll use Lilly B. Haynes. Last year, I budget, we had a budget for Lilly B. Haynes of 90.
92,000, I think. So Lilly B. Haynes.
Was $92,600 for 21-22. When I project what we're going to spend for Lilly B. Haynes this year, for, actually spend, not what's budgeted, it's 100, it's over $100,000. And I can certainly send you my spreadsheet.
I like a spreadsheet.
So I'm projecting that we're going to spend $112,000 and change this year for Lilly B. Haynes. So next year, I added 10, 10.47, 10.46%, and that's where I got that new number for Lilly, for Lilly B. Haynes of, it comes to 123,922, I rounded up to 124. So when comparing to the actual amount budgeted of 92,000, yes, it looks like it's up 30%, but I didn't anticipate that our energy costs this year would increase so much. So that's where, I'm just trying to explain that, while it looks like it is a dramatic budgetary increase, but in, when you're looking at projected expenditures for this year, it's not as dramatic. So I will send the spreadsheet along, so you can see.
Just because, again, when we're looking at the things that, you know, we, we don't have control over.
Yeah, exactly.
Seeing the spreadsheet, I think, would be great for everybody.
I think this, that'll explain it.
Yeah.
I think P through D was about district-wide salaries.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, he's, I don't know, is it a question, those, I don't know if those are questions or comments?
You know, overall, I think it's a, it's a statement that they're seeing, you know, big increases, many salaries have significant increases, 66% in part-time, 25 in certified.
Right, but if we, if I can just, like, if you look at 122, he's just strictly looking at district-wide. If you look at all of 122, it's going up 3%, because I looked at what we were spending historically in each of the different locations, and we're spending more in part-time salaries in district-wide, so I shifted the cost from the various locations. So in total, the 122 part-time salaries did not go up 66%, they went up 3%. It's just in one location, it went up that much, but he's not looking at the other locations that actually decreased.
Is that a spreadsheet too?
That's, that's in the back of your book, actually. Well, if you look in the back of your book, tab.
Tab 8, no, tab 7?
Yep, tab 7.
If you look at tab 7, it's by object, and if you look at 122, you'll see that in total, that really isn't up, that one line is up 66%, but in total, object code 122 is up 3%.
And that probably votes for all those other ones as well, right? He's looking at just district-wide.
He's just looking at district-wide, so I think you really have to look at the whole, so I think this sheet would be helpful, this document would be helpful to look at, because I think it might answer why.
Is there a, a column that could be, you know, I don't know if this is a canned report.
It is a canned report from our system, but.
Like an option to put in expected expenditure to your end?
I don't have that.
Because then you could see where.
Right. I don't have that option for that report. But in the, in 121, item 4, that's the increase in substitutes that he had asked earlier. That's the long-term substitute that we have to provide coverage for FMLA. So I, I mean, I can certainly go through and kind of point out some of, some of those, because I think some of it is, he's just looking at the district-wide without looking at the entire picture of the object code.
Okay.
And then, again, I think D, 13D is 627, which is shared fuel cost, which I had answered. We do, Joe and I work together on that. And C, what does this cover? So that's, I think Jeff had talked about that in our, in his presentation. Object code 330 is contracted services, so the increase is due to the visiting nurses' contract, as well as the $125,000 for our IT contract that this year was paid for using a grant.
So I think 14 is probably already answered as well.
Yeah. And then, yeah, and then I believe the next.
Dean was a thank you.
15 is a thank you, and then, next.
CIP.
CIP.
I don't know if those were answered, Chris is.
So the first question discussed about, oh, there it is, about the 2 million. That number is based on, basically, asset management principles, where we should be recognizing that I'm a small shop, and I really can't execute a program of that size in addition to COVID issues, other expenses, and, you know, something more realistic. You've probably seen that, that 2 million's actually just 1.2 million now, so that's what's been put forth as the actual CIP budget. Second part of that, number 17, is discussions about shared equipment, and I've always found that sounds great in theory, but the problem is, everybody always needs the same piece of equipment at the same time. So for example, nobody ever asks if we can share snowplows, because, you know, although we all use them, and we all need them, you all need them at the same time, and that's pretty much very true with heavy equipment as well. So the tractor, the equipment that we do have right now is an old excavator, I think it's almost 35, 40 years old, so you can be sure that we will get every last penny out of this one. The only reason we're taking the one out of services that we have now, which was a hand-me-down from town, is that it's rotted out structurally, and the cab's about to fall off, and it's just not safe to operate anymore.
So. I think the rest are all common.
Yes, and I think, for most of the rest are all comments, and stuff that we can follow up with a line. I want to give the group up here a chance to also weigh in in case we haven't covered something that had come to their attention. So I don't know whether anyone is sitting here going, I had this question, and it didn't get answered yet. I know, as I keep saying, I'd like to see what would happen if, you know, if we could not put in the budget those things that had previously been funded, and now, you know, what would that do? I also just have a, sort of a general question, I'll give these guys a chance to come up with their questions. When talking about the coaching aspect, it's been a long time since I've been in middle school or whatever. So how does this coach, how is that different from a teaching position? So did we just grow the overall number of teacher sort of roles to student roles? Does that make sense? I'm just confused, like, what is a coach versus a student versus a teacher?
So a classroom teacher is tied to a specific classroom or content area at all of the different grade levels. The coaches, and, you know, I would, they're coaches slash specialists, so they're specialists in their content area. So, you know, they, they don't necessarily have their own classroom, but they are pushing into classrooms and planning and co-teaching with teachers through those coaching cycles that I had explained. They also do provide tiered intervention services for students, and that, those tier two and tier three cohorts I was talking about as well. So they have a, you know, a various role. But all of them have teaching experience and have taught in the classroom previously before coming a coach, and they've all been trained through a very specialized student-centered coaching model that we are, we've implemented this year.
And a percent of their time on a daily and a weekly basis is providing, you know, some intervention support to students, as Mrs. Fazio had pointed out, where we are trying, again, to avoid that population of tier three students that could potentially funnel into that special education population. We're trying to go the other direction in that, provide the supports necessary to keep them going the opposite way, and that, that's a big part of the coaching responsibilities as well.
Yeah, and they're integral to, you know, just looking at the student data as well, and making sure that planned programming for students is aligned to what they need. So I know that they're a part of the leadership teams at the different level buildings, and play an integral role in making, you know, decisions in relation to student supports.
I also had a question about the coaching model. The data's really exciting for math. Is something similar in the works for ELA and literacy?
Yeah, so I highlighted the math, because that was an area in which we reprioritized some of our resources to grow. We have had literacy specialists in place previously, and it's the math component that we chose to, you know, to add as a result of the success we were seeing with the literacy work, but also just looking at some of our math data, knowing that some of our students were lagging, and particularly around that 4-5 transition and the 8-9 transition. And also, you know, since that, though, we've all. all centered around this new coaching model. So everybody is working sort of on a, on the same playing field as a result to their practice. Yeah.
So you brought math up to where language arts has been.
Yeah, and we kind of pressed the reset button, where that entire coaching team is now coaching under a very specific process. So we've kind of redefined the work even for the literacy folks, too, and they are seeing similar impact of the work in the classrooms. So really excited about it, we are.
Thank you.
Yep.
That was helpful.
Okay, since the coaching was brought up...
Yeah, but you were part of that in the year, a lot of discussions in the last couple of years, right?
Yeah, yeah. So for the 2020, 2021 year, I, I can't remember when the coaches were implemented. Was it for this year, or was it...
This was the first year for math.
Yeah, this is the first year of implementation for math.
Yep.
Okay. So that would explain why it's zero for the, the tier-three students because you had...
We didn't have the coach.
That's correct.
Okay. So for the tier-two students, it doesn't really look like there's any significant difference between sixty-two and sixty-five percent achieving the growth?
Right, that is definitely an area we're looking closer at, and actually, that data then does help. So something I was remiss in, in sharing with you is that that data then prompts the coach to push into those flex boxes where the students are receiving those tiered interventions and working with the interventionist to make sure that those interventions are actually aligned to what the students need. So that's work that, that's continuing. I mean, that, we're talking about a very, like, it's literally, I don't know, three and a half months of the work that we're looking. We saw a lot of success in tier-three, so now the coach is pushing into those flex box, blocks for tier-two to make sure that our, you know, our efforts are worth it in terms of that intervention.
Okay, I hear you on that. But in terms of the coaching model, I would imagine that the tier-three versus the tier-two, there's much more intervention than what the coaching model is at the tier-two level.
Yeah.
Because if I understand correctly from what I heard last year, the coaches do not do all intervention.
No, that is correct.
Nope.
In fact, most of their time is not intervention.
Seventy-thirty.
Okay.
Seventy teachers, thirty students.
So if you just look at this bar chart that you have here, it looks like where they're doing intervention is much more effective than their seventy-thirty.
Well, it's a snap, it's a snapshot of a group of kids.
It's a snapshot in time.
I mean, the, the work, the feedback we've gotten from teachers, too.
Right.
We put that slide in.
And I didn't, I, I also had an elementary example that demonstrated a snapshot of a specific classroom with a coaching model where we saw, you know, significant gains on pre- and post-assessments associated with, you know, with student data.
Where two teachers were working together, the, the coach and the regular ed teacher.
Right.
Yeah, we took that, we didn't have that slide in there.
Right, right.
Okay. And so, okay, so this is just the middle school students?
Yeah, I just took, really just a snapshot. Yep.
And for your snapshot of the elementary schools, what's that look like?
If you can show the slide if you want, quick.
I don't.
Yeah. Let me share it with you. That might need to be, oh, there we go.
While, while you're on.
Yeah, give me a second to, to pull this back up.
All right, hold on, let's see. Uh, math.
Right there.
Yeah.
So this is an example of a grade-three classroom, specific with a partnership of a classroom teacher and the math coach. So the learning outcome for students is that they would use strategies to solve subtraction with or without regrouping within a thousand. So the percentage of students who were at proficient before they started this was six, and at the post-assessment was sixty-five percent. And that was just looking at subtraction facts. Actually, the more impressive number here is the second set of data, which it says the percentage of students who were able to demonstrate their subtraction facts with regrouping. So now they actually have to identify a strategy in which they're going to use to regroup, a more complicated skill. We didn't have any students who can demonstrate that skill at the pre-assessment, and seventy-five percent who demonstrated growth over the post-assessment. And the work that this coach did with the classroom teacher, you can see the students in the picture there, they're actually working on a strategy book. So the instructional strategy that the coach was teaching the teacher was around developing some agency of the students to, to know what strategy they would want to use for that skill set and use that as they, they practiced the skill. So that's the instructional connection that was, you know, work that the coach and the teacher did in terms of, you know, high-leverage instructional strategies for students. When students actually identify what strategies work well for them and build a strategy book for themselves, they're more likely to use the strategy in a successful way. That's a research-based strategy. The coach, you know, worked with the teacher on implementing that strategy in the classroom with the teacher. So this is just one example of that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Before we leave coaching. We gave you a hard time about this last year, if I recall.
You did. No offense taken, though.
And one of the things that you did was come back with statistics and graphs to show that it was successful. You didn't have a lot of data to show us last year. And what I'm looking for, and I think you're, I think you're saying that, is that there is a correlation between this program and keeping special ed students in district.
Correct.
Which is, translates into money savings, which is what we're interested in on the board.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, it was a long time since I was in middle school, learning how to add and subtract, you know, that kind of thing. But I think, if, if, so I'm, that eleven out-of-district students, you're able to relate to this?
That's a direct correlation of keeping that number at that or lower, if at all possible, yes. And have, yeah, having this is, it's, it's intervening now and making sure that we're doing our best job to avoid students going on to, to increase those numbers.
I was more impressed with the reduction in out-of-district students.
Yeah.
That's a huge savings.
Yes, it is. Significant.
It's still a hard sell.
Yeah, especially when, you know, tuition, you know, and it fluctuates. We've got some students that hundred thousand dollars, others might be a little bit cheaper. You might have to put in a residential component, which could be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it varies, but it's a huge cost.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm sure, and I, and it kind of went without saying, that, you know, why is there an increase in special ed students in town? How many people are moving into town because of the special ed services? I think, I think there's a component of that as well that you can't control.
You can't, no. And that, that prevalence rate is increasing for every town, the numbers are going up, but you're right. I think families might look at East Lime and look at the numbers, and it might be favorable to, to want their child to be, you know, personally speaking, I'd, I'd rather have the supports in the school where my child could stay there.
Sure.
Rather than having them, you know, outplace certain things.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But it's in the best interests of the child.
Thank you.
Yeah, good, good points, Peter. Thank you.
One, one last question on, on the math eye-ready assessment of growth.
Yes.
Is there a, a figure of how much growth is achieved? I, I know you've got percentages of students achieving that math eye-ready assessment.
Right, this, these are students who demonstrated growth from the first assessment to the next assessment. There is, you know, a, an end-of-year target that students are working towards, but that data does not reflect that. These are just students who demonstrated growth from the first to the second. At the end of the year, we'll take a look at the percentage of students who met their growth target for the end of the year.
Okay, so how much growth are we talking?
So it varies depending on the student. For some, it was significant. For some, it was, you know, what you would expect from the, the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. But, I mean, we're talking about seven hundred students, so the growth, the growth did vary.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, just a general question, insurance. How often do we put the insurance out to bid?
Well, we've been, I've been here, April first will be the start of my eighth year, and in that time, we've changed three times so far. We were part of, oh, Kevin, you probably remember originally years back, we were part of Cigna?
No, I think, well, go way back, but it was Anthem then...
Anthem then Cigna when I came in.
Oh, it was Aetna.
Oh, I'm sorry, Aetna, that's right. We changed to Aetna, then we went to a high-deductible plan, and then, since then, we've changed to the state partnership plan for the last two years. So it's looked at with our brokers frequently to find the best cost. We found a very, when, when we were self-insured, the fluctuation was like this, and at one point, four years ago, it was, we were upwards of twenty-four percent for an increase, which was crazy money and crazy costs. Now, being on the state partnership plan, it's really leveled itself off with a consistent, something we can consistently budget for. And again, it was one and a half to two percent of an increase for this current year, right? Yeah, so we're hoping it stays between that one and five percent.
And when do we think we'll get that final number?
Is it at April?
Yeah, we're hoping.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we hope, it normally comes in, in line with, like Anna just said, around the public hearing. So we're hoping it, it's adjusted a little downward from where it is right now, so we're hoping that, too. But here again, going back a few years ago when we were self-funded, it gets to a point where then, you know, your major medical kicks in, but it had to get to a huge amount per individual cost before it got there, and it was just, you know, we couldn't maintain it anymore. So that's why we went out to bid. And Aetna was good over Anthem for a few years, and they jacked their rates up, so, you know, that was self-funding that. So we do keep looking at that on a very regular basis.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good, a good question, Denise. That's something that, you know, again, it, it has changed. The high-deductible was the rage a couple of years back, and I think we're starting to see more districts kind of move away from that high-deductible health plan.
Well, I think that was all of our questions up here. You do have a question? Oh, sorry.
How many additional staff hirings were there under ARP?
Under ARP? Well, if we go back here, John, let me go to this slide for you that shows that exact number. So right here, these are the positions that were, this is slide six in your packet, and you can count them right up. I think it's roughly maybe twelve, thirteen, what's that? Thirteen-point-seven. So they're right there. Again, not all of those positions are carrying over. Some have already been embedded into the operating budgets, others have been diffused, and dollars next year are covering the cost of some of those, well, the elementary teachers, as well as the school psychologists and the technology teachers.
Okay, now how many, if any, were hired not covered by ARP, that were entered into the budget?
Let's see. The math, elementary math coach.
Math coach and the two MTSS intervention teachers.
Yes, but it didn't cost, the MTSS teachers at the high school didn't cost us any more money because we repurposed two positions at the high school to get those in. So it was a wash, sort of thing. So we're trying not to spend more money on these positions when we can get them into the operating budget at no cost or reduction, you know, we're trying to do that.
So what you're saying is there was no additional hirings outside of ARP?
Exactly. More people outside of the...
No, outside of ARP, no. Are there any other positions? Was there a social work?
Well, that was in the budget.
It was in the budget.
That's right, it was in the, okay, so it was already in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there any other, any other, no other positions outside of ARP or ESR? We've had some pairs that have been needed.
Yeah.
Yep, that fluctuates. But yeah, that's it, John.
Okay, the other thing is, when the ARP money runs out, you have quite a few hirings under it. Are you planning now to see how you're going to pay for, for these people that are under ARP now, it runs out like in 2024?
Yeah, we're already starting those discussions as to what do we want to see, or what do we want to work with the Board of Education on trying to keep. But I'm not going to sit here and tell you that we're just going to come to you next year with all these positions back in the budget and looking for, you know, us to fund them. That's, that's not our intention or our goal. Obviously, everybody would like to keep all of these positions, but we know that's not fiscally responsible. You're talking, you know, one point, almost one point four million dollars worth of, of positions here. That's why we're chipping away at those, and where we can repurpose and reduce and cut, we can do that to maybe slide in a position here or there. You got our focus, remember, a lot of these positions focus around mental health, social, emotional needs. That just continues to, you know, outside of COVID, too, there's a great need there. So there's where we're seeing a growth in positions.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, yep.
If I may, I have some additional questions. Okay. I, I remember for, I think it was in 442. I remember for the acquisition plan, we went through this last year during the budget hearings, and I'm just a little confused with the, the wording in the commentary. Five-hundred-thousand, which equates to a hundred thousand annual payments over five years. Is there a reason that we have it all front-loaded, or...
So...
Rather than a hundred thousand each of the five years? I, I know the answer's probably there, and I just forgot it, but...
So the, I'm not sure about your question, so I'll just explain the acquisition plan, and maybe I'll answer what your question. So every year, well, the last few years, we've put in five-hundred thousand dollars to what we call the acquisition plan. Anna then goes out to bid for the best financing in addition to ours. I believe there's town vehicles, et cetera.
Right, right, right.
So then, once she gets that, the, the financing for it, she then bills us at the Board of Ed. So we'll just say that it's a hundred, you know, ten, ten thousand dollars or eight, you know, because it includes interest. So she gets the financing, and it starts in September. So she bills us every month for the next five years, ten thousand dollars, and we pay it back. In essence, we pay for the financing. So, because we at the Board of Ed do not have the capability to do that type of financing, it has to go through the town.
Right.
So we're, we're not paying back the whole five hundred, we're paying back a hundred thousand. But that number that you see in 442 represents last, last year's and the year before, and the reason why it's not a straight hundred thousand dollar increase is because every year, prior year, acquisition plans or loans, if you will, you know, are retired.
Right.
So the difference is always a little bit less than what we're asking for.
Right, okay.
Does that explain?
I just forgot that this was all the town's acquisition plan.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Kind of like all the vehicles in town, et cetera. And then, just a curiosity question, you mentioned the elimination of AKIVA and three positions at the middle school. Were those positions that were eliminated from the district staff, or were they reallocated someplace else?
Five total positions in AKIVA, two were reallocated, and three were reduced, and we have no other place to, to put them, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Were those just attrition, or did you have to...
The, the, one, yeah, one was attrition. Yep.
Okay, okay. And then, there was a mention of the reorganization of the technology department, and I'm just, I can't remember if our previous assistant superintendent sort of had that hat.
Yes.
And I'm wondering how that's organized now, if you get to wear the hat, or...
Some of it. The instructional side.
The hat, I don't think is as big as it was when Amy wore it.
Have we reduced that?
Yeah. But we have made, we have definitely made some adjustments there and have captured some savings in the way of support staff. Again, thinking about what's our priority and readjusting our resources to align to our priority. So in the, you know, adding the four elementary teachers, excuse me, the three elementary technology teachers, we've pulled back on some of the instructional technologist support, because now these teachers can actually fulfill some of that role in the, in the, in the building. So we've captured, you know, tried to reallocate in that way there. Even, I know these are grant-funded positions right now, but just thinking about if we want to keep them, we're making adjustments now so that we're able to. we're making adjustments now so that we're able to, you know, reallocate resources, rather than just continue to add.
And then, is the reason that the salary for the three elementary technology teachers is higher than the four elementary teachers that were kind of mentioned in the same area? Is that because of their expertise, that they come in at a higher step, or?
Yeah, essentially, they're higher, you know, they were actually teachers in district who took the new position, so they've been in East Lime for a long time. They do have a special certification to teach the class, but that's not why their salaries are higher. It's just because they've been in district that much longer.
And those four elementary teachers were hired, brand-new, basically, brand-new teachers hired at that bottom step. So, you got a, yeah, a forty thousand dollar gap, roughly.
Okay, yeah, I figured as much, but I just wanted to clarify that.
That's a good point.
And then, the last question, and this is primarily because on the town side, we're looking to hire an IT director going forward. And so, we don't have an IT director as such in the school system, correct?
We don't, no. We used to, and we've since then contracted out. So, we use an outside vendor for those services currently, yep. So, we've got a lot of engineering, networking, and it's really a high level of, you know, so we contract out through custom computers, and they've done a great job for us over the last couple of years.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, yeah. No, no, good questions, very good questions.
I have one more question. On page two, in your budget book, in other professional services, on line, item three thirty, other professional tech services, you briefly mentioned it earlier, but I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around this three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. Maybe if you go into a little more detail, how that number came up?
Yeah, so, two pieces to that number. One is the need, because we contract out for nursing services. So, all of our nurses are a contracted service, John. So, one of us, as Kim Davis talked about, we needed to increase and have an extra health aide, a nurse. So, that's one cost, one piece of it. The other piece, we were talking about the baseball field. So, we used money from the ARP to cover the cost of technology in the operating budget, and then use operating budget dollars for the baseball field. So, now, we've got to refill that hole, correct? Which makes up, was about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so one twenty-five plus the nursing.
And the nurses is one ninety-six, five hundred.
For the nursing increases, yep.
Page fifteen, in section, well, section seven.
What section?
Section seven.
Tab seven, yep.
So, section, yeah, section seven, page fifteen. Actually, it starts on page fourteen, if you look, on page fourteen. You'll see all of the three thirty contracted services. And if you go, really, there's pluses and minuses here or there. But where the bulk of it is, is in, on the next page, on fifteen. If you kind of go toward the bottom, there's the one ninety-six, five hundred for the nursing. Do you see that? And then, one sixteen for computer ed. We have some decreases in a couple of other spots, so the net was one sixteen. And then, there's an increase in contracted services for maintenance, and that's due to, I'm not sure if Chris is here.
One ninety-six, five hundred for nursing?
Yes.
How many nurses does that involve?
So, we have one, a full-time nurse at each building, so that's five. And then, the middle school has an additional five hours. So, all the other nurses work the bell time hours, so they're like six and a half hours. We have an additional nurse at the middle school for five hours each day to support the increased need of students with health conditions there. That won't hopefully be something we always need as students get older and manage some of their health concerns independently. You know, that second nurse at the middle school should fade away. So, that's what we have right now. So, we have five plus the, and we have one health aide at the elementary level at Lilly B., which is an addition.
Those five are full-time?
Yes, and they're contracted through VNA.
Okay, all right.
There's a fluctuation too, where we could get a student that, you know, has some significant medical needs, could move into district next week or next year, requires a full-time nurse. We're now responsible for bringing in that nurse, and that would be an additional cost on top of, you know, what you see there. Or a student could move away to another town too, reducing the cost as well. So, it fluctuates up and down. We just, for this coming year, those are the costs that we have associated with that.
And legally, what are, what's the town required to provide in the way of nurses?
Whatever the individual education plan might say for a student.
If there weren't any.
Generally, we need to have a nurse at each, at each building, at least, but.
Medication administration, midday emergencies, you know, diabetic management care. There's all kinds of, you know, inhalers, things like that, so.
Yeah, a lot of medications, for sure.
Okay, truly the last call.
One last. Can I go, Paul, and then I'll?
Just a question about the Salem tuition, when does that get usually locked in? Is that still?
Um, what is that, tuition, Salem tuition, is it locked in yet?
Yeah, the, yeah, we voted on it, we voted on it in January. The tuition rate, the rate, is that, yeah. So, the rate is, the rate itself is settled in January. The board, both boards voted on it. And then, again, the enrollment fluctuates, depending on how many kids from eighth grade come here versus magnet schools, or, you know, as kids leave district and go somewhere else, so that will fluctuate.
Yeah, that's what's not finalized yet, which an eighth grader might decide, I'm going to go to, you know, a magnet school. They get into a magnet school, they don't end up coming to us. We don't get that, or the town doesn't get those tuition dollars. So, but again, fluctuates.
And on the special ed reimbursement, I remember Kevin mentioned that we're supposed to be reimbursed after, we're responsible to a certain level, and then the state's supposed to kick in, but, I mean, most times doesn't. Are we, what we projected in the past, or what we have here, are we usually pretty close to the mark? Or are we usually get more or less?
What do you think, Kevin? Yeah, we're pretty.
Yeah, we're conservative in our, you know, estimate, because we don't know what the state reimbursement rate will be. And then, they are funding a little bit more this year. I think they must be using grant dollars, so we'll see a little bit more than we usually do. I don't know how many years that will continue. So, we are conservative in our estimate, and then hopefully we get a little more and do better, but we try not to overestimate that amount, for sure.
The state does not reimburse us at a hundred percent of what are, so our, anything over eighty thousand dollars, to use a round number, is supposed to be reimbursed to us. And so, if we spend a hundred thousand, we should get twenty thousand, but we don't. This year, as Kim said, they're giving us eighty-one point something percent, but last year, it was seventy-something.
Time goes up and ups and flows.
My last question, I mean, it may not be yours, but on the building side, the school jobs are still open? The elementary school?
The, the school projects?
They still open?
Yes, they are.
Are they going to be?
Yeah, we should be winding those down. Well, what do you think, Chris?
I have one more expense that we want to get done, something the, the.
Yep. So, one more, yeah, one more expense, and then that should, that should be it. We're finalizing reimbursement, right, Mariana, to try and close out those school projects pretty soon?
Yeah, so, once the Board of Ed accepts the project is complete, then I can begin to file all the final paperwork, and then it gets audited by the state, and then the final payment is made.
And we did not use all that money that was out, like that thirty-seven point five million, we ended up not using at all. Pretty close, but we didn't use it all, so it became an under-budget, and it was pretty good.
I just want to ask the question that Anne Santoro asked. On slide thirteen, on the per pupil expenditures, which are the districts that are in the same DURG as we are?
Not all of those.
Right.
No, we just tried to take a regional, I can get you a DURG slide if you want to show. Waterford, North Stonington. The ones that are above, Gillefer, Flintton, I think those are the next DURG up. We'll save our country next year ago. Yeah, so they're around us. Which if you want a picture of the DURG, you can get that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep, make a note.
Everybody good now? So.
All right.
Mariana, all, two of us will follow up with the items that you were going to provide greater detail on, and then.
I have a note, and I'll, what I'll do is work with Jeff, and then we'll get the information.
Okay, then, I'll distribute that out. I really appreciate your patience with all of our questions and your time. I know it's nine o'clock, you've had a full day, and just really want to thank you for all the work that you put into this, and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. It's good to see you all, and we'll see you soon through the process.
Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, public discussion. So, next is board comments. Does anyone have any more comments that they'd like to bring forward? No?
Um, it's just, I'm just looking, now, I know the, now the heavy lifting comes, because they've just, you know, showed us what they need, and we got the, you know, we're going to be hearing from the other side.
Yeah.
As to what they, what they feel like they can pay, or what they can't pay. So, it's going to be a, it's going to be an interesting process.
Yeah, I was going to make a similar comment. I don't envy us in the coming future. It's a difficult decision, because they're doing a fabulous job.
And.
And a fabulous job costs money.
Yeah.
Yep.
And there's just, there's so many drivers of the budget that you just can't do anything about, because they're subject to collective bargaining.
Correct.
And as long as we have collective bargaining and public unions, this is where we are. Any other?
Want me to adjourn?
I would second that motion to adjourn. All those in favor? You oppose? No, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.